Listen, listen, build me for a few minutes. I want to share a couple of stories that I hope will, will set the tone for what we're doing. Yesterday, Monica came up to me and said, "What we were doing in these workshops was a great thing." And it was what the people wanted, and it was too bad that we didn't do it in the evening.
Excuse me. I take off work.
So that more people could participate. And I shared that story with Lou Rosenberg today and a couple of other people. And I said, "You know, really, the focus of these workshops is primarily the council." One, to put them all on the same sheet of music, or at least able to see the same sheet of music. So that when we go to do the business of the city, we are in some collective agreement as to the goals. We may not agree on the road to take to satisfy the goal, but we are in some collective agreement for the goal. That way, when it's presented to the city, we can spend more time listening to the citizens and their opinion of that goal and make the adjustments accordingly. And I hope to do that in this workshop, is to hear from the councilman a lot, the things that face this city and the decisions that we have to make as councilmen. And I'm going to digress a little bit in that many years ago, I was the fire marshal at Fort Stanford, Houston. And they were building the new Brook Army Medical Center. And the gentleman who is in charge of the construction, or gentleman, Colonel, the army officer who was in charge of the construction was a gentleman by the name of Colonel Rod McNamara. It's a big guy who stood about 6'6". And one afternoon, I went into his office to inform him that something was wrong in the construction, as the fire marshal, that was my job. And then it was going to cost him a couple million dollars to fix it. And he jumped up and started pounding his fist on the desk and yelling and screaming at people. I was called names I didn't even know existed. And then all of a sudden, he looked at his watch and he says, "Hey, Jim, it's 5:00 o'clock. You want a beer?" And I said, "Come down." He said, "That was business. You were doing your job as the fire marshal you were doing. I was doing my job as the chief of logistics. We can disagree, but that doesn't affect our friendship." And I hope that we, as council members and we as citizens, can see that, that this is the business of the city and that it doesn't necessarily impact friendship or other parts to that. Because we, as the elected officials, are the fiduciary agents of the taxpayer. We are responsible to the taxpayer. Okay? We are the ones that can go to jail for mismanaging the taxpayers' money. Okay? And therefore, have to know the answers to the questions that we ask to make the decisions going forward. And we rely heavily upon staff, the city manager, the city secretary, the city attorney, to guide us in the right direction, but also to give us as much information as possible. With that being said, I see some major things that we, as a council, have to look at in the immediate future. And I'm going to talk a little bit about each and then go into a little bit more detail. Master planning, and I'm not talking about the document that's in your book, but in a master, we have to have a plan for the things that the city is responsible for doing: streets, water, sewer, public safety, parks and recreation. We have to know what that's going to cost and what we're going to need to be doing today, what we need to be doing tomorrow, and budget accordingly for those things. We have several boards that are appointed by this council: the 4A Board, the 4B Board, the Planning and Zoning Committee, I think it is. The Parks Foundation has a board. The River Ben Tiff Fund, we learned about yesterday, and the $8 million sitting out there of liability, that's a significant piece that we need to be aware of and kept up to speed with and have the appropriate representatives on that board. And the Phelps Board, I know the mayor serves on that board, but the council also has an appointment there. And we have to discuss those appointments and make those decisions collectively. And I think the city charter calls for the collective appointment to those boards. We have a budget amendment that we have to do right away. You know, the budget that was approved by the previous council was based on a tax rate that wasn't approved, and there was a $60,000 more or less difference in that. And as we go through the budget workshops to do that, we're going to have to look at how that relates back to the master plan. And probably one of the most important things on our plate, as Mr. Vipon talked about yesterday for planning and zoning, is the long-range growth plan, or more importantly, a zoning plan for the city and the appropriate ordinances for that, and an annexation plan. And they talked about a three- to five-year plan and giving some more information on this. This will not be the forum to discuss it, because I think we have to do it in executive session, because it's legal advice, but the number of pending litigations that were pointed out to us yesterday, and that has to take, be considered in all of our planning. And when I come back, I'm going to come back to master plan and just share a couple of things that I took out of yesterday's briefing of things that we know today. When it comes to streets, okay, we know we're getting, is it projected, $380,000 this year in street maintenance costs. Probably a little more, but it's projected at 380,000.
Forecasting is 30,000.
Yeah. And until we see some numbers to give us some trend, but there's a lot of big street problems, you know? And we have a plan, okay, that identifies priorities, but one of the challenges with that plan is that some of those estimates go out five years, six years, well, there are no timelines on that plan, but could go out five years, six years, seven years. Are there conditions that would exist that would change a person's priority on that list? Absolutely. I think we should have a detailed plan on that, as well, as with ordinances, you know, they'll talk about getting an exception to policy, if you will, or a zoning variance or what has been currently used.
Variance.
Right. You know, but when they develop the zoning ordinances, they will also develop a set of procedures to say, "If you want a variance, these are the conditions that you have to meet." I think our street maintenance plan needs to have that kind of information. That way, when somebody comes to the city manager and says, "Hey, how come you're not fixing my street?" Okay? And he goes to the plan and says, "Okay, well, you're scheduled for fourth quarter 2014." And you say, "No, that's not good enough. We've got the procedures to follow if you need exception to that." Flooding is one of those things that could change that. Water main breakage is one of those things that could break that. But that's certainly something that we have to address as a council collectively. I think that's on the agenda tomorrow, to put that together, or to have that put together by the city staff for this council. One of the things that alarmed me yesterday about the presentation from Public Works and from Larry Heimer was that all of our maps about what water flow is and where water lines are and how big they are and how old they are are in Rudy Goskis's head. What happens when he dies?
We've got maps, but they're handwritten and updated by staff.
Yes. But it's one handwritten map, you know? And the same thing existed, that was the same zoning map. But with that map, and as was identified in the M&amp;S engineering study and was re-emphasized to us yesterday by not only our engineer and our Public Works people, and planning and zoning and our comptroller, is the impact of somebody tying into a water line. What's that going to do to the people down line? We need to know that. What's it going to, and what's it going to cost the city to do that? And the issues of impact fees, so that we can plan for that kind of thing. So that when somebody does tie into a water line, what are we going to charge for that? And we're setting aside the money that's going to allow us to upgrade those water mains. That's something we absolutely have to consider. Public safety got briefed to us. Couple of big issues coming up to us. EMS says they need more money. We sent them back to say, "Okay, give us some details on runs and how much you're doing in the city, but we need more money." And the projected population drop justifies that. Yeah, EMS calls are going to fill up. And providing EMS in the city of Forestville and maintaining that company. The fire department talked to us, one, they brought up the $750,000 fire truck. They brought up the issue of going to a paid fire department. The police department of...
They weren't paid, Jim?
No, sir. Of, I forget, 14 vehicles. Six have over 100,000 miles on them. You know? Not enough vehicles for all the officers. That we have supervisors using their own vehicles. We're going to have to buy police cars. Those are some big numbers when, you know, it's not going down to Anseer and picking out a four-door car. You know, there are police department requirements for that sort of thing. Those are some big numbers. Mr. Sack presented some issues over the River Ben to Amalong case. There are $8 million in debt, you know, and paying that debt and having won a lawsuit that has reduced the tax revenue that's going to help do that. If that growth doesn't occur, how's that going to impact the city? And that has to be considered as we go on. I talked about planning and zoning. Ms. Nichols talked about the three-year, three-year to five-year plan. I didn't get clarification, and maybe I didn't ask the question, but when they were talking about the water main, our biggest water main is a six-inch water main?
No, we've got bigger than that. We've got eight-inch, 12-inch, but they're in different areas. So that one that you're talking about is what they're going to put for that development in that area.
Okay. Well, I had written it down. You talked about a six-inch water main?
Yes.
We talked about the hydraulic model that's a little bit in the budget, that will be part of the budget workshops. The, and I talked on it. Mr. Heimer talked about the wastewater plan improvement that right now is at about $2.3 million. Unvalidated was the number that they used, but we're currently looking at a USDA loan that's still got to be paid, and that's got to be considered. He talked about an additional $1.3 million in water improvements and, I guess, sewer line improvements that needed to accompany that. He brought up storage tanks that was not identified in the M&amp;S engineering plan that's going to cost some money. Chamber of Commerce came and talked to us about getting some additional funding. Parks and Recreation about the new issues with the median and needing to be able to maintain that and some additional costs on that. Got a lot of things affecting this council that we learned about. And when we look at those things, I think we need to really solidify that master plan. Okay? And as such, I'm going to just humor me, if you will. We have a police department. We have streets. We have water. And we have sewer, which is called as public safety for the moment. Parks and Recreation, no particular order. Okay? We know we have some things we've got to do now. The wastewater plan. Okay? This fiscal year, we know we've got to spend what, and the budget is allotted X number of dollars for public safety this year, but we've had some additional requirements come up that are not funded in there. Streets, we know we're going to get X number of dollars. Okay? Maybe if we solidify our plan a little bit better, we can see where our shortfalls are. We know we've got $1.2 million in some water repairs that are needed. Okay? Water bottle was addressed in there, that are unfunded. Sewer plant, 2.3 million. The parks, if we just look at the erosion control, I'm going to just put 350K there that are unfunded. That's just this year. I think we need to really understand where we're going to be, what our requirements are going to be next year and the year after that and the year after that. Because as our population grows, by some estimates, could double in the next five years, we're going to have additional requirements for streets, for water, for sewer, for parks and recreation, for public safety. But we still have a limited budget. We've got a, if you will, a budget deficit this year. One of the items that I put on the, and we don't know the answers to these questions, not all of them. When we look at the M&amp;S engineering plan or study, they gave us some recommendations to say, "Oh, we think you should do this, and this should be a part." But what they did not include in there were what it was going to cost. You know, is it going to cost some money to determine where we're at? Is it going to cost $30,000, $50,000 to get an updated engineering study or survey or thing to tell us what it's going to take to fix the erosion control? I think we have to do it. Is it going to take a water model to, and a system map to identify growth in the city to facilitate growth? Is that going to cost a little bit of money? Yes. Is that going to cost $1.2 million, but it's going to cost some money? Is it going to cost some money to do some smoke testing to our existing sewer lines to identify places where we have infiltration? Yes, it is. And that was one of the problems that was identified to us yesterday. I contend that we need to know this. We need to know where we are today before we can plan on where we're going to go tomorrow.
It's forecasted.
Right. But to really put some detail to this master plan, and that's one of the things that I put on the agenda tomorrow, to give some specific direction to the city manager to produce that. We've got some base pieces to this. We have the M&amp;S engineering study. We have the Garcia-Wright grant, and it was in the '90s, but it identified some of the drainage things that are still true today, and we can use that. We have other pieces that we need to be utilized. And then we can put together where the holes are and where we need additional, and use that to go forward. I think this is critical for us to get the answers to the questions as the fiduciary agents of the taxpayers today. So that like we told Mr. Hopkins, so we have a plan for 10 years from now, so that when we do fix the parks and we do fix the drainage, we also have the plan for the maintenance and the operation of the parks. But we can't develop that plan until we know what we need to do. And if you look at the Phelps budget, and this is one of the ones that, or their master plan, if you want to call it that, I find very, very difficult. You can go into seven years from now to the month and how much money they're going to spend on a new truck, or how much money they're going to spend on computers. They've budgeted or planned those expenses that far out. I believe we have to do that to give a roadmap to know where we're at. And as a result of that, I think we need to stop where we are today and say, "We need this." Okay, if it takes us 60 days or 90 days to put this together, then it takes us 60 or 90 days together to go forward and focus on the things that we have to do as a city, those essential city services.
One thing that I can interject real quick is I want the audience and this council to know that 60 days, 90 days, you know, is not enough time to come up with a detailed plan that day. Another thing that I want you to consider is when Phelps does their budget and forecast out that long, that far, they've issued debt to cover that. They're telling you how they're going to expend those funds from that debt service. So we have to consider that, too.
And that's why I have...
You don't do it overnight.
Exactly.
Because I did it.
Yes. And by no means would do I expect a 10-year detailed plan down to the day in 90 days, but we can have a framework and we can have the starting point. And we can know, okay, what we're missing, excuse me, these pieces of information, but we're working on getting them, and the timelines are coming to do that. And then we know that we can't make a decision about something that's going to be impacted here, because we don't have the information, but we're awaiting the answer. The point I'm trying to make here is that we, as a council, and more importantly, you start adding up all of this stuff, and I'm getting way off here. You add up a $750,000 fire truck. You add up the cost of a paid fire department. You add up the cost of increasing our police department and increasing the resources to our emergency medical services. All are things that we are going to have to do in the next five years, going to have to do, based on population. We don't have the money to do it. We don't have the money to do the things that we need to do today. Are we going to have to raise taxes? I don't know. Are we going to have to go out and issue bonds to pay for this? I don't know. But I think we need to be planning for that today and know what those costs are going to be. And then we can say, "Okay, how are we going to fund these things? Is an increase in taxes the best way? Or is there a way of doing this with a collaborative effort with maybe giving some of those projects that are within the realm of FEDC to an economic development corporation, if they are? Is there a way of funding some of those other projects with a bond?" I don't know the answers, because I don't know what the delta is. I don't know what these total expenses are. I mean, we can project how much we're going to get in revenue from property tax, sales tax, fees, et cetera, and we can subtract that out, but we're still going to end up with a difference. How are we going to fund that difference? And that's what we need to be addressing as a council, and that, I believe, is the purpose of the master plan. Go ahead.
Councilman, I want to throw one other thing on your agenda. I wasn't here yesterday. I apologize. But I think you did a good job of listing the needs, but there's one thing that I think is missing here, and that's, how are you going to build a revenue stream to do this? And let me take the specifics. Our present zoning plan is kaputski, because we didn't get any notice out within 90 days of its adoption, so we're a year in a vacuum, or part of the year, at least. But the McCoy's plan that we've just agreed to and that will, I guess, get started next month, is a good illustration. And one of the essential reasons, besides them being good neighbors, good friends, good business, that we needed them in the city is we needed those sales taxes. Okay? And we needed the property tax. But the moment that you go say you need the sales tax or you need the property tax, they come back and say, "Well, your plan, your zoning, your development scheme requires that within three years of your annexation, you've got to provide a full penalty of your services." It's that double-edged sword that the senator left us with, the 1989 amendments to the zoning act. I'm going to suggest to you, sir, to the council, to the mayor, to the public, that we need an overlay that talks about revenue. And specifically, if you look at what's happening in the city or outside the city, I don't know whether it's true or not, and I'm not going to take it to be true, but assuming that all the discussion I've heard about Richardson's moving up the road is true, they're going to be outside your sales tax. They're going to be outside your head of the lawn tax. And this city, because of the way your topography lays out, every time you go to annex up the road or down the road, you've got a water line and a sewer line that's either going to be pumping clear over the hill with a lift station, or you've got a water line that doesn't have pressure to get there. And all of your annexation looks to me like, and I'm not a planner, but just looking at the city, you can go west, and what do you get? You get in the footpath. You go east, you can develop. But that's stretching our facilities the long way. Okay? Or the distance way. You can go south, you've got to pump uphill, but south towards Phillips is probably a logical place towards our Toronto Grande that you're going to develop. But our facilities are short to go that distance. If you go north, it seems to be the way, everybody's kind of focused, because you've got the bike path on one side and you've got the main pass on the other side, and you've got a nice development corridor in between, and you've got prices high as the sky in between. That seems to be where we're looking, but you've got lift stations, you've got water shortage, well, you've got oak hills that probably provides the water for us, but no greater expense for the city there. But one of the things I suggest we think about is, where do you grow so you can maintain your sales tax and your property tax for those big box items that are going to provide you the revenue for the other items that support the people that are already inside the city?
I agree 100%.
And one of the things that your comptroller has suggested is, is that we may not, and I think you know what we did last year, we adopted a final boundary, not based on the proper way, but based on the practical way, based on who's paying taxes and who wasn't, and did it the inexpensive way instead of paying for an enormous or costly survey. But when we did that, part of the deal was to see where we have people in the sales tax and where we had out. In talking with Mr. Goslin's selection of the controllers, he thinks that it's a possibility that we have not given the controller's office, or not the state controller's office, a really up-to-date briefing on where we have our boundaries and that we may be actually getting I don't know that this is true, but it's certainly worth a fail-safe check to put on your list, if I might, and to be thinking about the absence of that tax if we don't keep up with the growth out the corridors, because when you look at who owns the property and you look at the development scheme that the topography demands, it's going to be out your roads. Nobody's going to get a new road for you. You're going to be going out 181, you're going to be going out 181, you're going to be going out 97. So those are your growth corridors, those are your revenue corridors. So those are your growth corridors, those are your revenue corridors, those are where your big boxes are going to develop. And getting water, getting sewer, and keeping text dot happy, keeping text dot happy.
That's oxymoron.
Yeah. It is not a neat trick, we found that out with the McCoys, and even though I was very comfortable working with the McCoys, there were lots of details that had to be hammered, and the same with Walmart. So I think, I'm really trying to talk about opportunity. The opportunity to grow the city has got to get us to focus, in addition to the immediate needs which you're properly focused on, where the revenue stream from maintaining the sales tax and the ad valorem tax is going to come from for new development. Because if some of those people take a jump a mile and a half out, they're outside your taxation for either ad valorem or for sales tax. And that means you lose them from within the city if they're already an existing business, and somebody else picks them up or somebody else has the benefit of not paying those taxes. And I know taxes are a touchy issue, but I do suggest that we think about these corridors and think about how we develop along those corridors. And you touched on it three different times. You touched on it, we've been talking about River Bend, because that's the development corridor obviously that's somewhat prime. You talked about it, and you talked about fire and safety because that's an undeveloped asset of the city. We don't pay for it and we don't have the rating. And you talked about, and you talked about squad cars or police cars. So some of the planning that's got to be done here has got to focus on the income side of the stream or the maintenance of the stream. I mean, if we lose one of the big boxes that's in the city and they move a few miles out, we're kind of in trouble. And so somehow we've got to figure out a way to keep them happy, or if they're going to move, make sure we're in a position to keep them inside the city. And a lot of it has to do with communications and keeping everything happy. But that's just another aspect, an overlay of what you're talking about. I'm not trying to be contradictory, I'm just suggesting that's a p.m.m.
One of the things that we recommended to the Planning and Zoning Committee is that as they begin to develop this long-range growth plan and this zoning plan, that they include a member of the council in there to keep the council's vision for the city involved in the development of the plan. Granted, the council would have the ultimate approval of that new zoning plan and those ordinances, but so that in the development of it, the council's directives would be considered, and that amplifies that recommendation.
And we've got the same deal with Mr. Patterson's involvement out there right now. We haven't annexed that, anything that gets sold out there for sales tax. It's not ours.
The McCoys is a voluntary annexation, and that's all we can do right now. Now, what is the process, just for my sake, if you can educate me, on if the city was to, obviously, we need to be able to, within the three-year timeframe as you stated, be able to provide the services, the water and sewer and the public safety services. But what would be the process for the city to annex non-voluntarily? What is that?
We're, Cindy's here, I want to let Cindy help me, but the short answer is, we've got a bit of a clock to go. I think we're seven months away from the window, a one-year out window. We had three years, let's start again, three-year plan. You adopt the three-year plan, you give your notice within ninety days. Everybody gets a chance to come in and say who and holler and yes and no and whatever, but you've got to get the notice out. We failed the last time for whatever remarks, remember? Don't know. We failed to get the notice, we failed to get the notice out. It killed us for the balance of three years. So in that, in the rest of the window, the downtime, our punishment for not getting the last word worked, and the rest of that, I think it's seven months. When that's over, we ought to be ready to go with a new three-year plan, whatever that's going to consist of. And I'm not suggesting it has to be an enormous run up the road all the way to 775 or anything like that. I just think it needs to cover those logical growth areas, and we need to be able to talk to businesses about being able to provide those services if they want to choose a larger site or better site or what site they think is more user-friendly. Okay? But we've got to have the ability within that three years to give them the water, give them sewer, and get the text dot curb cut or the text dot turn lane. And the text dot turn lanes become turkey doggone expensive. If we do the turn lane, I mean, do the traffic signals, Andy, correct me on this, please, but I think the text dot turn lanes are somewhere between $750,000 and up.
Very possible.
Okay? Just put the signalization of it. And on Walmart, we got them to agree that that was the pass-through, that we'd contract with the highway department to do it, and turn right around and hand the contract over to Walmart, and Walmart would go in for it. Now, the status changed for now because of the last session. We do not have to be the middle person. We can say, Mr. Miller, if you're going to go build Walmart two up here, we want you to put the signals in per text dot, and that can then get us out of the middle and make things a little easier and straightforward. But they do a traffic study or require a traffic study, if the traffic study commentates that we need a deceleration lane or acceleration lane, usually both, then that's traffic lights, and that's the extra width and the extra turn lane. And that's coming in at somewhere around a million, a million and a half dollars depending on the size of the project.
One of the issues that we came across, disregard your information, councilman, during this annexation project that we're looking at was that we didn't even have a city boundary map, and that's one thing that we have to address the way that we did before we can even annex any further. That's been taken care of. I think we brought it to the previous council for an update and had our first hearing. We need to have a second hearing, so that'll come back to you now as a new council to solidify that.
We had two pieces of property ran next to Rogers, which is the storage facility that we inadvertently included, which we shouldn't have. But that'll be a correction, and...
We did one rea-, I remember one reading on that correction.
Right, we need to finish the second reading, but where I'm really going with that is, to the extent that there's any possibility that the controller's office in Austin doesn't know where we are, we need to fix that.
What's the process for doing that?
Your controller knows exactly what it is.
She's been working on it already?
Talked with the state, just to kind of, talked with the state, and they sent me a, two different files that are actually common and limited files, that are huge, that aren't in any particular order. They have, one of them is by zip code. Zip code does not mean they're in our city limits, as everybody kind of, a lot of people understand that, but some people don't. She sent me the two different files. One is supposed to be what is in our, they have as our jurisdiction, and I've got to go through and compare them. Again, they're a huge file, it is something I've gotten. What I talked to her, what usually how the state, to the controller knows about what businesses are in your jurisdiction is when you annex, you send in the annexation maps and the border boundary lines. That has not happened properly over years. We have not annexed properly, et cetera. I do know that Walmart is in there, or was concerned maybe because they moved out, but they're still in there. I tried to, again, it's a huge file that I went to sort, and it's something that I had a, it's a project.
And so if we have somebody identified in there that's not paying taxes, that really shouldn't be paying sales tax, we notify the controller?
Well, they need the boundary, yes. They're going to need it, probably once y'all go through and have that boundary.
Or after the second reading of that.
Yes.
So this will be in December?
Whatever you annex, that's where you turn that information into control.
Now, related to that, just to finish that whole deal, when we're doing the building inspections, and we're doing the review of the site, and we're doing all the approvals, we basically don't charge for anything. And not talking about impact fees, permit fees, basically. Permit fees, okay? Because basically what happens now is we ask the engineer to look at drainage, water, sewer, and to some extent, fire and turn lanes, the public sector, to make the rate. And we pay that out of city fund, I believe, general fund.
Yes.
And the same thing is true if I'm involved with P and D or I'm involved with the council, even though I send a different bill on it, it's coming out of the general fund, it's not being paid for by the developing entity. And that's contrary to what most public entities do. Most public entities make new development pay. At least some, it's not a significant portion of their own cost of development.
And hopefully, that's something that will be addressed in the, as we hear, in the zoning ordinances that would include the fee schedules, and that's...
That actually can be done with, we can do that, work on that without the zone. Those are some fee schedules, that type of thing can be done, we can start working.
Because...
I believe, actually, they had about four or five months ago, is my understanding, one of the ladies up front was helping to me start that project.
Start that project, right.
Getting other cities' fee structures and seeing what they charge. Everywhere I've been, they do charge for it. There's engineering has to be done, and those types of things, and that business wants to be able to come in, they pay, they pay a hundred percent.
One of the positive things that's happened, and I'm sorry, one of the positive things that's happened to us and is the activity now in our area and the desire for people to come in because it's profitable for them to do that. Prior to us, you know, we were a small little town, and you live there who were from there or trying to get out of the big city. Now, everybody wants to come in. So there's a difference. Before, you try to track them by offsetting the cost of all kinds of stuff for them, now they're willing to pay so they can come in. And I think you've experienced that in your occupations.
So do I understand that we're in the process of evaluating our fee schedules?
Yes, sir. She's been doing that, and this is staff on their own, no contractual services, her on her own, doing a analysis of the surrounding areas with the same activity and seeing what they're paying. And that will be a presentation to the council.
Do we have a timeline on that?
No, I'd have to get with her to see that, but we're hoping to get that done pretty quick because as we made mention at the workshop yesterday, we're seeing an increased activity again in our area of the building program.
To the one with the shop, so hopefully it'll make here.
Two issues that come up with that, one is the city's costs of doing that from the legal and the professional fees, as well as the city's costs from a staff perspective. You know, if we're having the demand, we need to consider that.
Yes, sir.
From an employee standpoint, or staff perspective.
We're excited about getting these projects to the council. First off would be the water and sewer rate study that was performed on a, that we were able to get on a grant by somebody that does that pretty much as a full-time job. He's willing to come in and present to the council. It's been ready for some time now, we're just waiting for the right time to bring it to the council for presentation to the citizens and then consideration for us to act on that.
It's the water and sewer?
That's water and sewer rate study.
Raoul Gonzalez, my name.
One of the best points, I think, that the controller, she and I talked, her way of thinking is it shouldn't be the people now that pay for things thirty years later, it should be everybody that's coming in on a yearly basis, and that's where...
Is this where the impact fees are going to be?
No, this is just a water and sewer rate study, just a rate study.
They're going to need those.
This was Raoul Gonzalez?
Yes.
And you're going to need that for U.S.B.A. loans. I mean, you're going to have to...
It's all part of that.
How are you going to pay for that loan? And that's a bad word, people don't like the word debt, but I understand, think of it a little bit differently. If you're building a street, you don't want to pay a hundred percent of that today that's going to be there for forty years. Everybody, over time, should be taking that share, and that's why cities issue debt, you know, and again, that word, people, oh, it's not like credit card debt. This is a project that, you know, that you build and it lasts over time, that everybody utilizes. Some cities, and this is just a strange one, but it's happening, actually, when they have their trash service, it's internal, in other words, we don't contract out with a company, they are buying the trash cans of Polycarts and doing it at a five- to seven-year loan because they are expensive. So that is paid over time for the citizens, you know, it's not just, because it's expensive with those Polycarts, it really is, you're going to have to own the trash company. So, but that's where, you know, some of these things he's talking about, that is...
It's debt equity financing instead of block financing.
Yes.
And the water sewer rate study was actually, it's being done on a grant, a U.S.B.A. grant, so that's where the cost on the...
All right.
Now, the other thing that can be considered, and I do this in the rural areas quite a bit on the water plants, and that is picking up on what your controller's saying is, we try to keep the base rates that we think are the minimum rate, keep those in line with what historically been the experience to the extent we can, and then have the people that want to come in and water rocks, and people that come in and want to water their street, and there was sort of property, like the water use, you have an inclining curve for them so they get to pay a little bit more to support your new water lines. And the reason I'm saying that is not totally to be cynical, is if somebody's got a really high demand for water, they deserve and should pay for a much bigger percent of the water line because of the demand. So that needs to be something, and Raoul doesn't necessarily, because I've dealt with him before, Raoul doesn't necessarily really focus on high demand. That's just a difference.
Let me ask this question, and I appreciate what you're saying because it's probably the best way of doing it. When we look at, if we're going to be increasing water and sewer rates, everybody's going to get excited. But, you know, but for the average consumer, if we maintain a, as you proposed, a historically accurate base rate, and then for those people, as you said, that want to flow the water down the street to wash a hundred vehicles a day, they're going to pay the extra usage fee, and that fee would be based upon usage. Does, I don't know if this study included that kind of...
It does, and that was one of the options that Cindy Nichols and I sat and talked to the gentleman, and he says that that's the smartest way, and the best politically, political way of doing it because it doesn't hurt the regular citizens. It's going to give the people, you know what, that's their desire to use that much water or their need to use that much water, so it's not going to impact the average citizen.
And he picks up your commercial.
And you'll hear that, or everybody will hear that when he presents because he talked about that, that that's the most common way that they do these water and sewer rate studies.
And then the multiplier is because your sewer is usually a function of your water, your sewers build accordingly.
We change to impact fees. I know they've been discussed as a revenue source, and I discussed it and have discussed it for several months, as something that we need to be including in the planning process. And it got highlighted when we got educated to all of the deficiencies or holes, if you will, yesterday. What is the process on impact fees and what are we doing regarding impact fees?
That has to be directed by the council because it's going to cost money to get that, and that has to be done by an engineer because legally, we can't just say, okay, we're going to charge you thirty-five hundred because that's the way we feel. we're gonna charge you thirty-five hundred because that's the way we feel. You have to have your, your backup information for that to happen.
It's a cost of service analysis, put it in economic terms.
And I, that's another one that Cindy is looking into, like the water and sewer rate study that we're able to get funded on a grant, that we're trying to get those impact fee studies done also.
Do we have an estimated cost?
I can tell you over fifty thousand.
Oh, yeah. Fifty, over fifty to a hundred thousand?
Yeah, and that's saying if you had some of your other plans in place. I'm not sure if you have all the information. There's a lot of things that go into it, so.
If I can throw just a little dampening on the impact fee. Impact fees really fits new subdivisions and new commercial stuff more than helps you with your existing city infrastructure. Okay? And I really don't want to present it as being the solution because unless you have somebody come in and do a KD home, no KD homes.
KB homes.
KB home subdivision, the impact fee doesn't really kick in producing the revenues you're looking for. You've gotta bring it down to the microcosm, which is if some single person wants to develop some single lot in the city, then it's gotta be over there.
And to implement it here, do we still have this requirement?
No, you can, you can do it much simpler in your existing, in your permit.
Permits.
And permit fees.
Yeah, impact fees, when you, they actually, again, are statutorily required to be kept separate in a separate set of books. The water is separate, the sewer one, you can also have a street impact fee. And it's for, if you're gonna build a water tower, that, because of those subdivisions are gonna require you to build a smaller tower, you would issue debt and you're able to use that money to pay principal only on that debt. And so there's, that's just one scenario, there's a lot. Like you said, it's not a, not gonna go to your water sewer fund to help your day-to-day operations. It's not gonna help your whole lines right now.
Up here, but if we do it here, do we have that same source?
Well, it's not an impact fee, it's just a.
Just a permit fee.
Just a permit fee.
Permit fee or a new certain.
Connection fees, there's other ways to do it, yeah. It's not called impact.
And this connection fee is being looked at?
Yes, and we do have connection fees that we charge already that were outdated several years ago. But the permit fees have lagged somewhat, so those things we'll have to look at. And they are being looked at.
Okay. The question that might not have come to the comptroller on this, if we have, forgive me for asking so many questions. I'm learning quite a bit and I appreciate it.
That's good.
The existing connection fees, does that just get dumped into the general fund? Or does it, do we have a separate fund for?
Connection fees would be water sewers, so it's in that.
But it's in the water and sewer operational fund? It's not set aside for?
And I don't, yeah, right now, and I haven't looked at all of your exact fees, but right now you don't have a fee that's gonna cover someone that's gonna put an increase on your water. But it's more just basic.
Yeah, but I mean, we're not using any of that connection fee like it would really, really, if we were creating or increasing connection fees, we're looking at it to maybe not immediately increase our supply system or the infrastructure to and put down the road.
You're not gonna win the lottery.
But it does.
Powerbomb.
But it helps pay your debt on your loan, is basically what comes down.
And that loan that enables you to have some places where if you go put a new Walmart in, you at least have a trunk line that you can dump your water into when you pump it over the hill. And that's one of our problems on Paareka Creek, on a couple other places. If you pump it over the hill, lift, what are you pumping it into?
Yeah, for, for some big developments that we've had interest in on homes and these subdivisions, all of that, that will help tremendously.
You have to build a division.
Sure.
All right, so.
I'm gonna move the water rights.
Can I take you to something really fundamental that will help everybody's thinking maybe?
Please.
If you think Leanne Hoesak.
Okay, we got that picture.
Some people know exactly what I've taught them. But if you think Leanne Hoesak can work backwards or forward, you'll, you'll put everything in your perspective. And Leanne Hoesak gives you your nine-one-one number inside the city, outside the city, anywhere in the county. So if you have a lot in or out of the city and you want Phelps to drop a temporary loop there, you cannot get Phelps there without a Leanne Hoesak number that goes immediately to fire and safety. And that nine-one-one number is the key to everything. You can't get a sewer line there, can't get a street address there, you can't pay any fees to Cindy, you can't do anything until you get a number from Leanne Hoesak. And that's probably a really good thing. This is one of the few counties where it's kinda connected all from that beginning, though. So if we look at our fees, like you're trying to put them in the multicolored on the board, but if you look at them from the starting point, then, you know, you want somebody to come do your site inspection, you want somebody to do the curb cut, you want somebody to look at your sewer, et cetera, et cetera. If you've got a connection with Leanne and you know Leanne, gave them a number, then you know that's growth coming and then your fees need to follow along. What do you do to approve the commercial, the residential, the whole thing that goes with her triggering that number? But you cannot get anything from Phelps, which means you can't get a contractor out there to cut a piece of wood, to lay the foundation. And so she gives them a number for safety.
And that triggered, how does the city track that current?
Through our permits office, she's the one that handles all that. They come into a permit, we wanna do this, this, and this. She gives them the checklist that we put in the back of your packet. And that's one of the deals that they, they'll send them there. They work real good together.
My, my question, I think, was if Leanne Hoesak issues the nine-one-one address, okay, but they don't come in and ask for a permit, how does the city know about it?
They come here first. They come here first and they're sent from here, definitely. They come here first all the time in any kind of development, even outside the city limits because it says Forestville. Cindy looks at it, I'm sorry, if not anything involved in here, you go straight to the county.
But what if they didn't? What if they just went straight to, they found out through somebody and went straight to county and said, okay, I need a nine-one-one, but didn't do anything else with it? How would the city know?
Another thing is that they'll go there and she'll say, have you gone to the city? You need to go to the city first, although they send people.
She'll look at the address.
Yeah. You need to go to the city because you are in the city.
So it's kind of a check and balance system.
Yes. And then if, and if. What's that?
They'll stop construction if Cindy finds out.
Yes, and that's one of the mechanisms.
And most contractors know they're not gonna take a.
Go anywhere, right.
Until they get that number because they're gonna have somebody deliver material and they won't deliver material until they've got a street address. But that's how we key our, if we, if we think about that in terms of everything that happens after Cindy gets the word or Leanne gets the word, or whoever you want to start, what are our fees? Are our fees appropriate for processing that application? One of the classic ones we've got now is we've gotta comply with the FEMA. It's flood hazard approval process. And I don't have a clue, Mr. Manager, whether our fees are appropriate or not. But one of the things we have to look at in lots of places is whether we're in the no-build or whether we're in the, you can build if you take certain measures, or whether you're out of the flood.
One of the, the best things that's been done by the permits office is Cindy is a certified floodplain manager. She's received training and she has authority to sign off, yes, you can build because of the training that I've got, I know and my knowledge of the city, so. Before that, that would have to have gone out to a professional to look at before, and now she does that on her.
Just a quick little sign, the floodplain map, does, does that exist digitally?
It was just adopted, the newest one for FEMA, correct?
Is that on our webpage, any questions?
I do not know if it's on there. We can, I'll get Cindy on this break that our mayor's gonna get us here in a little bit and see if I can get that, if it's on the web or how you get to it.
It needs to be a link, I don't think. It needs to be a link.
Yeah, and that was part of the problem. The file was so large that in order to get it uploaded, either place, they'd send us a link.
Okay.
And so we'll make sure that it's working or it's back updated.
Cause I, and I'll finish this little piece. I appreciated Cindy's comments yesterday about wanting to put a lot of the stuff online to streamline her processes and stuff, but her challenges of being a one-person shop.
Sure.
And I think this discussion really will help amplify that. With your permission, I don't matter, can we take a little break?
Sir, over here. It is four o'clock, we'll take eight, five and a half minutes.
Fishing caps.
Yep.
Outflow.
Somebody offering to give me factory food.
I'm gonna get it too.
One.
I have a couple of questions. More towards the city staff as it relates to public safety.
Yes, sir.
And these may be rhetorical questions or be, they are things that would have to be included in that ten-year plan that I'm talking about.
But as it relates to the fire department, you know, we know we have a requirement for equipment, specifically the ladder truck, as a unfunded requirement. But as, as the city grows, based on population, is there a requirement, statutorily or otherwise, that says at a certain point you have to have a paid fire department?
There used to be a ten thousand population and above, but no, it hadn't been that way. Am I correct?
No.
Yeah, it used to, once you hit ten thousand, you had to have a paid or start planning for it, but they've gotten away from it.
But here, here's your problem there, Councilman, it's not, it's not really easy to deal with. Our, our fire department's technically a volunteer, right?
It is a volunteer, yes, sir.
Okay. And if you stay volunteer, you're under one set of rules for training and equipment and et cetera. The moment you start trying to do what everybody wants to do, which is to have daytime paid firefighters, which is the troubling area of the volunteers, you come under the Texas Department of Fire something commission and they've got a whole raft of different standards. The moment you start to think, and the only reason, I'm doing it.
I'm just not patient. In case you needed something. In case somebody needed something, share.
That sounds like the mayor's planning it easily. But there's, there's a different agency, is all I'm trying to say, that regulates the stuff. And so the moment, the, the, the truth lever happens to be more paid, unpaid than population.
Oh.
And on time.
Well, and I think the direction I was going with this is, it is apparent at some time in the future, the city is going to have to consider a way of supporting a fire department.
Yes.
Okay? And.
If you're gonna get the ratings.
For the, for the ratings, the ISO ratings, which the commercial businesses are going to want in our community. The box stores are gonna want that better than an ISO ten rating. Okay? We obviously need to ask the question, what are, what are these costs? And how do we go about getting those costs of what it's gonna take? And at the same time, for EMS, you know, currently we have a department that services the city of Forestville as well as the county, which could cause, that does have paid daytime personnel, a single day paid time crew, but they have a volunteer crew on backup. As population increases, our citizens and the businesses are gonna request, well, demand better response times. Particularly, you know, if Wilson County EMS is on a call in Pope and they have to call in a backup crew to do there and you've got a fifteen-minute.
They're gonna, they're gonna call right over there.
On massage.
Yeah, so we have to be considering what are these costs to a, a dedicated EMS or a partially dedicated EMS. And we also have to, as we're looking at those costs, look at when, based upon population or based upon city growth, we may have to implement that. And I would contend that both of these, based upon the projected population growth over the next ten years, will have to occur within the next ten years.
Can I interrupt you, sir, and I don't mean to be rude?
Please.
We need to put, because I don't know the answer. We need to put the question over there with our zoning about what the requirement for the level of fire and medical is for the provision of services. Because you're required to develop the service plan and there are some constraints on how much of that can be volunteer and how much of that can't. Okay? As, as a function of zoning and an annexation plan. And I, I don't have that memorized.
Some of your sister cities are good places, some of your sister cities are good places. Sister neighboring cities, Shert, Sybalo.
Yeah.
Some of the ones that have been in this growth pattern, Sybalo when I left, right as I was leaving, we were faced with that and they were working on becoming a daytime fire department. Those are the types of people, there are those resources.
And the real reason that they wanna do that, that your people were doing it in Sybalo, is they wanted that Canadian firm to come to town.
Well, that was, it was more of a staff.
Yeah, but that was the big selling point for a lot of people. If you don't have these kinds of services, you're not competitive.
Well, at that point, we were, actually, we were seventeen thousand population. So it was becoming a strain on the volunteer fire department. But they, they were going through that.
And at the same time, when we identify what are the requirements, we have to identify what are the costs. And along that same line, when it comes to law enforcement. And, you know, as our population grows, how many more police officers are we going to need? And then there, and what, what population is going to trigger those requirements?
And who's there?
Jesse Evans has it. And he can present that to you or we can compile that, but he's done the research on how many police officers per citizen is standard, I don't think there's a requirement, legal requirement, just a standard, the same, one officer per X minus six.
Is optimum or something like that?
Yes, and he has that.
But then as we are projecting our costs over the next ten years, we need to include that, these for, 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 for public safety.
And one of the things I'm gonna, and being an actual law enforcement officer myself, always being a supporter of the law enforcement community, we have to be cognizant of the collective bargaining agreement. We just renewed it for the next three years. It's a headbeat price tag. And at the next three years, if we're all together still, it's something on the negotiations stage that we're gonna have to consider very seriously because many of the horror stories that you hear around the country, a town goes broke because of the collective bargaining. And I, I go speak with the officers if there are quarterly meetings and I tell them. And I go speak with the officers at their quarterly meetings and I tell them, you know, think of that every time that you want more or ask more because you can ask and you can be high on a hog today, a town goes broken, we have to lay you off, you know, let's work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On this, barring those resources, is there a standard they have to meet?
There is no standard. The Department of Public Safety, which is the top law enforcement agency in the state of Texas, tried to institute that, got sued by officers and it was, it was, the deal reacted. We do have a current, in the collective bargaining agreement, there is a standard, they have to run this much setup pressure through, but it's minimal, it's minimal.
And who checks for that?
And basically, it is, it's about this big of a contributing factor if they pass or fail or get an increase in pay. Even if they don't pass it, they're still eligible if their performance otherwise is, has that ability. So that's something that, you know, we've got all kinds of legal issues that we get faced with when you say, you're going to have to do this, why me and why not these other people in these other departments? And why are you signaling us out or whatever, no matter if their job, you know, is a life and death type of job that way.
Well, the reason that I was asking is because my concern is you have an officer, okay, and maybe he might be ruled out, whatever it is, and he's running or he's doing something, it could be, it could be bad for him that he kills over dead because he was overexerting himself, you know, my last question, that's my concern.
One of the issues, and I'm sorry for talking so bad, but one of the, the parts of the collective bargaining agreement is that they have a physical every year. They have to go to get a physical from a doctor before they do their agility test or whatever. If the doctor passes it, we have that on file, you know, something happens from a doctor cleared him and they did this deal, so that's one of it.
I just have a quick question, when you were talking about EMS, how much does Forestville contribute to the Wilson County EMS system?
$20,000.
Per year? Or what, do you know what the overall cost of the EMS system is?
I do not know, and I think you asked for.
Yeah, one of the questions that we asked EMS yesterday was to, you know, they stated in their presentation that they were going to be coming to the council at the next budget process, asking for more money. I asked the question, how many of their calls were made in the city of Forestville? They could not answer the question. I asked, you know, if they had seen an increase and what that increase was in the city of Forestville over last year at this time and they could not answer the question, they were going to go back to their contract biller to see if they could decipher through their bills, how much was city of Forestville or not. And I recommended to them that if they were going to come to the council, you know, asking for more money, that they needed to have that kind of information.
What I'm saying is that an EMS service that's volunteer part of the day, servicing an entire county that's growing the way our county is, that's not going to be sustainable. I mean, just the idea of it lasting long-term is laughable, actually. So something's going to have to happen and I just don't want, my question is, is how is it going to affect Forestville as a whole once that happens, once the county grows to be too much for volunteer EMS to handle?
And that was exactly my point, that based upon the projected growth and as well as the experienced growth, the need to look at a combination fire department for the city of Forestville, to look at an EMS service for the city of Forestville, be it volunteer or a combination of sorts, as well as increases in the police department are going to have to be made at some point in this next 10 years and must be considered in a master plan.
One of the issues that a lot of cities go to is a public safety department instead of just police department, a police department or dual EMS and law enforcement, and they run that operation out of one organization.
Or they start ESDs also.
Yeah, they start ESDs also. One of the issues that we've got is that we as a council manager with the assistance of the citizens have to start collaborating more with the county and the other cities because we do interact so much and that's something that's been lacking for some time. And that's one of the deals that we've got, Wilson County EMS, you know, but they're here in Forestville, but they've got Sherwood, Sybalo, you know, so those issues.
Stockdale EMS and Laverne EMS, which is, thank you, City Manager, was a perfect segue too. One of the things that I think should be a project of this city council is to, whatever we want to call it, is create a small council of governments, because look at the taxing entities that we have in Wilson County, from the schools to the cities to the hospital, to look at services, okay, that are duplicating and say, what can we provide better collectively? And what can we provide better individually? Several things come, you know, health departments, animal control, law enforcement is one of those things, you know, emergency medical services, the ESDs was one attempt at that and is having some challenges in various places as well as some successes, but I think, I believe that if we open the door of communication and begin talking about that, okay, between the cities and the county, that we may find some great cost savings. One perfect example was the election, you know, where we had, and we have a great opportunity coming up with this next election because again, we're going to be going through redistricting. One of the challenges that existed, why you had to vote at the county for the national election and voted the city for the municipal election was based upon the county box numbers. Many of those county box numbers include the city, Pope ISD, Forestville ISD, all within the same box. So it was not practical to create a municipal, to do the municipal election through the county and it was not practical to do the school election through the county and that's why they had to be separated. But as we're going forward into next year, in this process with redistricting, we may be able to combine that effort with the county so that we can reduce costs across the board. And I think this should be an effort of this city and of this council, you know, and it may be one of those efforts that Philip Vipon talked about, where we plant the seed to the tree for the shade will never enjoy, you know, I think by starting that now or at least starting those discussions, that may address many of these long-range needs that Laverne is facing and Pope is facing and Stockdale is facing, maybe not to the degree that Forestville is, but maybe we can find a way of sharing resources and providing better services and I would encourage us to think about it.
Just one bit of, that's a positive for the elected officials to do because you are the leaders of the community. As Mary Ananas, the EMS director stated, they have a mutual aid agreement with other areas when needed. We as a city do the same and may not be the most appealing deal, but our sewer machine, other cities don't have one and our guys are dispatched to Laverne or to Pope, they've gone to Ball City to assist when they need. So our city employees work real good with the surrounding communities, that's one. And then our animal control, I believe we may be the only city in the county that has any kind of animal control work and whenever law enforcement calls in those areas, i.e. an accident or a dog bite with a vicious dog, our employee is sent out to do that just as a courtesy. So that's one of the working agreements that we already have and we really need to expand on like you're talking about.
There was a conversation I had with Lieutenant Clark yesterday about the animal control. This was just that way, you know, it's obviously we're going to have to revisit that ordinance with what the police department is doing with animal registration in their presentation yesterday, but as many challenges as the county has had with animal control, this is an opportunity to start that collaboration and develop an ordinance that could potentially grow into a county-wide piece. Along those lines of that master plan, is there any other piece that we haven't discussed that we should discuss?
I'd like to hear on the hotel motel.
Half of the last half of the meeting was the possibility of how we use hotel motel as an incentive to get some of these big boxes or smaller boxes to see Forestville's different life, has an incentive to come here. Knowing that on one hand we're going to tax them and on one hand we're going to require them to do all these other things like any other city would, what can we put out as a, as a honey for getting them to come here besides just saying Forestville exists? And the question was, what kind of, you know, tool can we use hotel motel tax for?
Marketing.
Within the statute.
Marketing.
Yeah, but besides just marketing, you know.
Those are really limited on the use that that can be utilized. Advertisement, performance and arts.
It can be used for a website?
It can be used.
Maybe improve the website?
Well, specifics on that is always a key heads to the, that it's bringing people to stay in our hotels. One positive on our end is what we've learned and I think I mentioned, is that because of Eagle Ford activity in the area and because of oil field workers staying in the hotels and occupying those, if we get those people interested in our community, that qualifies as heads to best.
I need to bring you all an article or clip from the Law Report paper where they conducted a seminar for executives from Eagle Ford.